I guess I'll just start with a general presentation and. That we can quickly go over to the next presentation, then we'll see. People still join in the meantime. Um, yeah, the seminar, there's a seminar that is brought up, that has been brought up by YouTube specifically. The Institute of Hyperloop Technology, Team Hyperloop, and also Heart Hyperloop. As a way to bring the technology closer to the public, but also generate a knowledge base. And a lot of talks from uh very interesting industry experts. About hyperloop and about very special topics for hyperloop. So we had safety already, we had. Uh, topics that regard legal stuff, so that's very interesting topics that one could look at. Normally, it's all on Wednesdays this semester. Now the semester is over, next semester will start in April. So we are looking forward to see you all in April again after this one. And there will be one special session left for E H W. And that one will be on the eighth of January, that will be on safety and I T. So all the stuff that is looking at software that will be covered in that seminar that will be quite interesting. Also helped by Arash and Daniel from. Yeah, I just basically jumped over all of this. There's a calendar link on the bottom left that you can uh. Take a quick snapshot that might be interesting for you to have this calendar in your normal calendar, just subscribe to it. Don't just import it, subscribe to it, so you can see the next events next April as soon as we put them in the calendar. Yeah, uh, all the hosts, just to recap quickly, Swiss group was one of the hosts of the seminar. Like EuroTube as well, EuroTube nonprofit, as you might know. Focusing on the infrastructure and supplying infrastructure is very important for the H W twenty twenty four to have that next year. And I think they're going into certification and regulation probably after. They have done their incubation, their research and their technology transfer. Then we have the Institute of Hyperloop Technology, where also currently building first trucks have also arrived at our facility right now. Building the go to, go to demonstrator at our facilities here and there. Uh, mostly focusing on logistics operation for now and then also large scale research and structure development for the. Um, EU heighted project. Then you have TU Munich, we probably everybody has seen also on LinkedIn. And other platforms there and you demonstrated that they showed the summer and I view the summer. At TU Munich, I've just seen Daniel Baras from London that just there, there's a lot of snow and Dominic needed to shovel. Double the way for that, uh, for all of them to just look in the tube and. Experience the passenger passenger experience that they also had in the capsule. But there also happened a few people already in the capsule while the vacuum was uh pumped out of the tube, which. According to Gavella was scary but managed. Then there's the European Hyperloop Center from art that they want to highlight here. Um, they've just completed lying down all of the tubes, you can also see that on LinkedIn, I guess. Where they have put down all of the tubes for the European Hyperloop Center in Pindham and Groningen. Which is especially nice to see because it has lanes which there as well. They will test uh within the next year. Yeah, that's just a nice image also as well, uh, the Hyperloop Development Program um that we are mostly all part of. Um, it's now testing also as well at the European Hyperloop Center in Gannam. They want to green the tube and everything like that, you can see all this year. There's a lot of suggestions that they are looking forward to do with the outside of the tube and the infrastructure there as well. So just for this uh session here, I would just wanna tell you that you can ask questions, put them directly into Zoom and the Q and A. Two F and A is the German slash slash first way, frage and antwort, uh should be Q and A for you. And then you can also upload and download or upload, I guess, other questions that you'll see in the chat, put some annotations there so I can see. And I would like to then uh ask the speaker directly to ask the questions, so I will monitor the questions and then. You guys can, uh, I will ask you to ask a question directly to the speaker, so we'll have a nice interaction there. Just want to mention as well, there's a YouTube channel for the active seminar, where you can all find all of the previous talks. Um, very interesting talk there and then the QR code on the right. And then also a link that I'll put in the chat that will give you. A nice overview of all the topics that have been given in the seminar. You can take a look at that one after the seminar, just open it and you tap, take a look at that. Nice table where you can solve through, filter by keywords and look at all the talks that have been given previously. Link is in the chat for this one. And now I don't wanna uh stop any, I don't wanna talk anymore. Because we have two interesting speakers, Oscar and Ricardo. Um, I don't know which one, which one do you wanna start first? Which of you guys wants to start first? Uh, hands up. You can take the first one. Guess we've seen Oscar's presentation flapping before, so you can. Uh, start with your presentation first and that will be on logistics and operations.
Yes, so uh I'll share my screen from here then. Thank you very much. Perfect. Okay, yeah, so thank you, Lucas. Uh, I'll quickly uh. Um, talk about the the operations and I'll cover two main topics, one of them is partnerships. Uh, so how to get the funds for your product project. Um, and the other one is logistics, so how to actually get your project project to the competition. Um, and yeah, so uh quickly something about myself, uh, my name is Oscar. I was um last year's Delta Hyperloop team and I was the lead of the Business and Operations Department. Uh, so basically in charge of the uh partnerships and also the logistics to the competition. Uh, and I quickly wanna show you uh some of my experience with partnerships and logistics. And uh maybe give you some tips and tricks uh for for the people that have to do it this year. Um, so let me first of all start in uh in my Delta Hyperloop team, how the partnerships was built up. Uh, we basically had two uh full-time equivalents on uh partnerships, you can see them here to the right, Daya and Elise. Um, and Dayan Elise really started in September with uh the partnerships. And uh yeah, maybe fun to tell that they met their target just before the E S W. Uh, so yeah, that's a tight schedule. Um, and together they uh managed to get around a hundred partners to make the project possible. Uh, and although two F D E sounds like a lot, I believe that um having people working full-time on it um. Really works well if you have the manpower because uh yeah, you get full-time engagement with the partners. Um, uh at all times, so having two people really worked well for us. Um, and yeah, I quickly wanna give an overview of the topics I wanna discuss. First of all, how to set a clear target. Um, then I wanna talk about, yeah, thinking about what you can offer as a hyperloop team. And then, of course, very important finding companies in contacts. Um, that I wanna touch upon in kind versus cash. Uh, and also highlight um some of the importance is on that. And then I want to quickly tell you some things about thinking of a convincing story. So let's get started with uh with the target. Um, yeah, so basically at the beginning of the year, the project manager, which in my case was someone else, Papang. Uh, makes a budget because he knows what he expects of the project and he knows what should cost around. And then he comes to uh, then he came to me and he was like, okay, let's make a realistic target for the partnership managers. And I say realistic important because if the if the amount seems way too high, it can work slightly demotivating. And then it looks like it's just been thought of uh randomly. Well, when you've got your realistic target, um, it is also really important to set sub-targets. Because that keeps your motivation going through the year. And a really important thing we noticed to take into account is to actually question yourself, when do companies. Make their finan- financial plans, because companies really work on a year to year basis, or they make their plans. For two, uh, two thousand twenty four in two thousand twenty three. So what we noticed is that. Um, yeah, ma- most of the companies were really making their plans around October and uh. And and i- in the end still in December and it was easier to get them on board in, yeah, so the early stages. Um, than than later in the year. So take that into account when they're setting your sub-targets. And also you should think about, what are we gonna do when we do not beat these sub-targets? Um, and then you can think of things like, okay, uh, we'll just stop all the engineering and we'll start calling with the entire team. Uh, for one week, uh, because we aren't making a sub-sub-targets and we will in the end maybe not get a target and be able to finish the project. So uh, yeah, that that's some of the important things, uh, but setting the target is really important. Um, then. Once you have a target, you need to, before you start calling companies or or searching for contacts, you really need to think about, okay, what can we offer as a team? And what I notice is that there are companies that are interested in recruitment. Um, because uh, yeah, all these, all these tech companies are really looking for uh for for young talents and. I think you should really use it in your advantage because I think everyone working in the Hyperloop. Um, the Hyperloop teams are from good technical universities, so it's really uh valuable for companies to be. A part of such a project. Uh, then the point I I find maybe weighs a little less uh publicity. Um, and the reason I say it weighs a little less is because um, yeah, although we have quite a big reach, some of the teams. Uh, it's not gonna be changing for company, but you can always call it because they might find it uh interesting. Then s- something I learned last year, what I found really interesting is that these companies really like to learn. Uh, work to work together with a a team or a project, engineering project without an N D A. And what I mean by that is that. These companies um usually, like some of the really high-tech companies. Uh, work for other companies, but they're not allowed to talk about a project. And some of the feedback we've received is that. The reason they like working together with with a team as Delta Hyperloop is because then they can go to other clients and say, see, we did this. Because at the end of the year, they are allowed to use the information uh freely. Some companies also like to actually test your pro- uh test project, uh, uh, test their project products in a high-paced environment. Um, so that's also something that could be interested in. Um. And then I I to to sum this all up, it's what what really worked for us is making a. Um, a brochure with specific packages, so. You can uh make a package for basically recruitment or that focuses really on recruitment and then a couple of price to that. Uh, but you could also like do a publicity package and that they get in your video for for a different amount. But I noticed that companies really like uh to see the professionalism of uh uh of these brochures and these partner packages. Um, yeah, so then.
Uh, we see your presenter screen, you might switch uh stock displays. Sorry, yeah, thank you for that.
Like this. Oh.
Yes, perfect.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I didn't see that, thank you. Uh, yeah, well, then um. The next part is, you you know what you can uh offer these companies, but you actually need to find companies and especially contacts. Um, and first of all, you need to think about, okay, what kind of sectors might work? Um, and we noticed that uh that especially like companies like railway companies, airports, airlines. Uh, are are really interested, but also big tech companies. Uh, so really think self like, okay, what do we wanna target? And then once you've thought a bit about the sectors, uh, then it's important. I see it a bit as like, think as a shotgun, not as a sniper. And what I mean by this is that. Like, you should try with as many companies because you need to find a company and find the right contact at that company. Uh, and yeah, that that all it just goes by chance and luck. And of course, your story really, that you tell really matters. But in the end, if the if the uh uh final uh person that makes the decision doesn't like Hyperloops. He uh will will will, he can still say no. So instead of really looking for the perfect company, the perfect match. Uh, just try as many as possible, uh, and you'll see that in the end you'll get some companies to uh to become a sponsor. Then what really worked for us is, uh, yeah, we had a team of forty students and use that network. I mean, everyone knows at least someone and maybe knows someone that knows someone. And in the end, it's way easier to get this 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 connection with a company via a person you know than randomly. Um, and then another um interesting way of finding companies in contacts. I thought the use of LinkedIn could uh could play out handy sometimes, because then you can actually go to a company. And specifically look for a person um at a certain position. So let's say you wanna focus on publicity, you wanna sell. Or let's say you wanna focus on recruitment, you want to really sell like, okay, become a partner. Yeah, um, and uh and we will uh, yeah, give you the recruitment package. And it's good to look at someone that does H R or someone that that is like a campus recruiter. Uh, so that 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 way you can really target and find um um the the right person. And something that also really worked for us is go to events and. Not only hyperloop events, but basically also just big tech events. Because that's also a really good way to meet new people. And uh, meeting someone the first time in real life works way better than uh than just on the phone. So these are some of the ways and tips that you can find companies. And I just wanna quickly touch upon in kind and cash and um. What I what I really noticed is that companies much rather give away products and services than cash. It's way easy to get a big cash deal than um. Uh, it's way harder to get a big cash deal than um than than an in-kind deal. Uh, so so really at an early stage, you already look, okay, which parts can we can we do uh in kind? And yeah, we we literally at a certain point saw that if you try for each part, in the end, companies uh really. Like to participate because they really like to see their products being used. Uh, and also another tip is for low amounts, just let, not the partnership managers, but the engineers do the calling because that just goes way faster. Uh, so for smaller amounts that don't need a long relationship building or anything, I really recommend to just directly call them. That's something that really worked well. And then, of course, once you get in touch with a company, it's important that you have a really convincing story. And the easiest way to have a convincing story is to be convinced yourself in the story and also to have the same story. So before you go to events, you start calling companies, make sure that you're all on one line, okay, what is our story? And and you know, try and uh you'll get better at telling it, uh, and it will just go naturally at a certain point. Um, what what also worked for us is including the histories, tell them a bit about what what the Hyperloop uh technology is. And and what what the European Hyperloop Week is, and they really enjoy that and then they know a bit more what they are getting into. What also worked for us is just mentioned that you do this unpaid, so that companies don't think like, okay, uh. Basically, the money we are giving is going to uh the beers for these students or whatever. That's like, if you say, okay, we just do this out of ourselves, they really, they they really believe you are motivated and it works. Um, and. Yeah, also what is really important to tell is just that you are uh students from uh from top tech universities. Uh, I think uh everyone likes to talk with students from top tech uh universities. And then, yeah, last part, I already mentioned it, tell the story with enthusiasm. Um, and the best way to get to do this is by really believing yourself in story. And it will just, it will just come naturally, tell it with energy and they'll be convinced that uh that you uh. Yeah, that you are a good fit. There may be some tips, start early with calling companies because companies take their time. Big corporations can sometimes have one month, two month. I think everyone that's a, has something to do with partnerships before can uh recognize this. Uh, I also noticed that calling works way better than emailing. Uh, because calling someone, it's easier to to just really convince them with all that enthusiasm. Um, yeah, what I also just mentioned, try as many companies as possible because you really, it's also. A a game of luck, you really need to find the right person, the right company. Uh, that's also in the right mood on the right day, so. Uh, try as many companies. Uh, focus also on in kind because that's, I think, a really good way to uh lower your budget. Um, and what I also, what what companies also really like is is at this younger age already really. Show that you are professional, so make good uh good presentations. And turn up on time, all that kind of stuff, just be professional so that they think, okay, well, although this is a student team, these are some serious uh. Serious people and they uh they go for it. So yeah, that was a quick um. Yeah, a quick uh recap on the years uh as far as partnerships goes, and I was wondering if there are any questions already from the audience.
Thanks, okay, there's there's already questions, uh, there's APTO, maybe you can ask the question yourself if you'd like to.
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah, I can see it here. Shall I just read it? Hi, it's good.
Yeah, APTO, do you want? Okay, yeah, we should do it, yeah.
Okay, I also, can you please go over two parts, engineering without N D A and what to do when not missing companies' financial plan? Okay, I I understand the first part of your question, but I don't understand the second part. What to do when not missing companies' financial plan? But I'll.
You can answer the first one and then.
Yeah, 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 I'll start with.
I'm missing the company's.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I understand now, yeah, yeah, okay. So the first part, uh, engineering without N D A. Uh, what I meant by that is that companies, uh, big tech companies usually work for other companies. Uh, provide services for other companies and they are not allowed to tell what projects they are doing because it's uh secret. So like, uh, when they work for NASA, they're not allowed to say what parts they are making because it's a secret project. Um, and that is what they like about working at a team as like Delta Hyperloop. Because at the end of the year, they can just show everything to their clients and although it is also an engineering project, they just can show and share everything. Um, so they actually have a story like, and and they also have something for on their social media, they can post like, look, this is what we do. Um, so does that answer your first part?
I guess we'll see, yeah, and then the second.
Yeah, so the second part, uh, what to do when uh missing companies' financial plans. So that's like, let's say you come in December. And uh they say, okay, uh, well, uh, we've already made our budgets. Um, and uh, yeah, there is no, uh, there is no, no way you are fitting into our budget. Um, we've had this a lot and it can be two things, they can be telling the truth or it's a really cheap way to get. To get rid of you and they just don't dare telling the truth. Um, but what we usually did when when this, when they said like, okay, it's not gonna work, we 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 just talked to them, okay, but. Maybe is there somewhere else or another division in the company that that might have a uh have an opportunity? And sometimes they say, oh, yeah, we have a uh innovation uh uh section in the company or we have a recruitment. Uh, so, yeah, you can, you you can ask um for that, but usually it is a. It's just, it's a really cheap way of 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 saying, okay, uh, we can't do this. Like when they, when they don't give a further big reason, then then, yeah, okay, you can always try it.
Yeah, yeah, and I see one, one thing that we've learned, um, when you're very late in the year and you wanna get money. Uh, governments, universities, public institutions are very good because they have their fiscal year at the end of the year. And either they spend the money or they get less money next year. So it's always good for them to spend the money at the end of the year and sometimes they just buy bullshit in universities. And buy new instruments on your new computers or something. Uh, but sometimes they can also put the money towards use uh into the hyperloop team. So if right now the end of the year approaches, by universities, public institutions, see whether they have money left there that they can put in there as well. Okay, and there's uh the second question that I wanna ask you, what are some of the best tactics you recommend for getting those partnerships for teams? Could be monetary part, technical training, I think you mentioned shotgun, networks, events, talking to the right people, what's the, what's the biggest one being early?
Um, yeah, I I think really the 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 one that. Works each time is using your own network. Uh, okay, let's say you don't uh don't uh find companies out of your network, then um. Going to events really, really helped. Um, going to a lot of events and speaking to these companies in person. Um, I noticed because I've sometimes been at events and I spoke to someone and. They weren't at the company that were interested, but then next week they came with the emails of 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 uh. All sorts of high positions in other companies that might be interested. So people also, because because they sort of, they 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 really wanna help you. So just speaking to people in real life is really the best way to go. And if not, then do your best to to find um telephone numbers. Because it's just way better to to bring your convincing story via. Yeah, via word than via an email.
No, totally agree on the network part. I think at the university for us, we had some institution that was all companies that. Support or do research for the university. And there was one person who gave us tickets to football games or whatnot ever. Just join in the high-ranking people of other companies and uh give them, give them a pitch right there, right then. In five minutes during the break and then get the sponsorship. So really, the network thing is big. And if you can tap into existing networks, even better. Okay, um, next one is, yeah, sorry.
Just uh also like if you have your prototype itself, also your hype group from other years, uh, that also gives them a view of what you're actually doing. Uh, so they might like that a lot as well.
Yeah, that that's true. Uh, there's more questions. Uh, would you recommend cold email companies? Also, how to, how would you recommend uh to reach out using LinkedIn?
Yeah, okay, so the first part, the cold emailing, um, yeah, I would do that. But outside working hours, because uh. How I saw it is that you have your day from nine to uh, let's say, five. And in that time from nine to five, you have the opportunity to speak to people on the phone. So your main focus should be trying to get to speak people on the phone because you have bigger chances. Let's say it's 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 five and and you know people won't answer their phone anymore, then you can send uh some cold emails. Um, and yeah, but and maybe from those cold emails at the end, one will react. And then you've got one, but it shouldn't be your main focus. Uh, yeah. So also maybe, let's say, let's say you're doing this part-time, maybe make it in such a way that you have one. A whole day that you can focus on calling, so at least one day in the week you are uh focusing on calling the companies.
Yeah, I I totally agree with that. I think emailing companies should be like the shotgun method. Should be broad, should be quick and you shouldn't waste too much time to that, but just shotgun and try to reach as most people as possible. Um, then there's another question, how long should the sponsorship brochure be? Seven, eight pages too long? I think we had a two-page last the 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 year before, but what do you think?
Yeah, uh, seven pages, I think, is too long and a wasted paper. I think you can fit it on the, on 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 two uh. Two pages and just uh mention, okay, why would, why would it basically be interesting to be part of Delta Hyperloop? Also, what is Hyperloop uh what and and what is your team? Uh, just just some short facts about your team and why they should sponsor and then still some packages, I think. Two should be fine.
Yeah, agreed. Um, next question, Oscar. Uh, I personally email lots of companies for sponsorship purposes, but ninety percent of them don't get back to me. What do you suggest uh for my next plans of action?
Uh, yeah, so if if these companies don't uh respond, I wouldn't like, uh, how'd you say? I wouldn't give up on those companies, I would try other ways, but this is basically also the the shotgun that I talked about. It, when you when you email a hundred companies, only ten will uh will even respond. And from those ten, you might get a meeting with three and from those three, you might get a sponsorship with one. So that's what I mean, it's just. Try as much as possible and what I said by choosing your sectors, you can target it a bit, but you never know which companies suddenly will be interested.
Yeah, totally agree, like sales or in this kind of partnership, it's a hard job, you'll get a lot of rejection or no answer at all, but just keep going. Uh, examples, what are some examples of potential partnerships interested in the technology?
Yeah, so maybe think of some other uh companies than the ones I just mentioned. Because I just said with the railway companies, I really noticed they were, they were really, really enthusiastic, um. At least in the Netherlands and and airports, but uh, yeah, but I mean, you can, you can see it. Uh, yeah, there are of course also some companies that want to uh give a greener, greener message, give a greener impact. So you could, should, could, could look at some of the uh companies that are a little more polluting if you want to go that way. Um, but they usually have quite a lot of money. Banks uh don't work for us at least. We've tried every Dutch bank and uh had no success there. Uh, you could try consultancies, uh, because they are just really interested in people that can think analytically and. If you spell it in such a way, then that could work. Uh, then a sector, we had, we had a really big. Uh, then a sector, we had, we had a really big building company, uh, as a sponsor. And, uh, I think what they like about it is that building companies are really old fashioned. And by joining in such a project, they can give some, yeah, new energy to their, to their company. So maybe that's, that kind of old fashioned industry companies you could try, but. I think, yeah, railway is a really good one to first start, just go out there and, and try and contact all the railway companies in your, uh, country.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so, yeah, railway.
Good starting point, yeah.
Yeah, all of those. And I think to the technology part, um, what I've also learned in the competition, that was, um, if there's, for example, bearing companies to do bearing.
Yeah.
They don't know how they operate in vacuum and they might wanna know, so, um.
Exactly.
Test that for them, just, just go for that and they will, uh, likely to be able to have a feedback. Same goes for all kinds of sensors and electronics. If you ask the, the, the customer, do your sensors work in, they say like, we don't know. They just test it, test it for us, uh, take the sensor and then test it for us and then get back. That's all they go on. Um, then there's a question about some success stories you might wanna share for some good partnerships. I think you mentioned, uh, infrastructure providers, I think BAM, uh, companies like that.
Yeah, um, but, uh, maybe, maybe, yeah, it's, uh, quite funny, success story for myself was this. This lady I spoke to, uh, on an event and I just didn't have an idea that I could get something, uh, working with her. But then suddenly I called her one more time and, and she said, oh, but, but I am the head of an association of all the. Uh, companies to do with rail and infra. And like that kind of stories only happen because you keep going to events and keep on. Yeah, networking with people, I mean, everyone, everyone, because I know there's everyone, you, you're a young student and everyone really wants to help you. Uh. If you, uh, yeah, if you've convinced in the right way, so that was a nice, uh, success story.
That's true. Um, so one, one more question, uh, another question about calling companies, a lot of companies I target have not provided their phone numbers publicly. Uh, and even seem to be dead answer, how to get phone numbers actually?
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, so I know this is, this is a hard part, uh, actually getting the contact details. Because people also aren't allowed to share, uh, contact details, um, I think for the new rules, but. Um, yeah, so basically calling to the, to the main number is usually also not very beneficial. Um, but then I would maybe before sending emails or anything to their main email, because that you know. No one checks the main email of a, of a big company. Uh, I would go for routes like LinkedIn and, and your own, uh, network, sending LinkedIn messages. If you really can't find, uh, find it, but, but also I, I'm, I'm, I'd like to add to this, if you already have a partner, let's say. You can also just ask them if they know other, other companies that might be interesting, because sometimes they also wanna help and, and share their contacts.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, industry and trade organizations, and Germany gets Yaha Car and probably different names and all kinds of. Uh, countries, uh, but trade and industry organization, they might have all the numbers and contacts to all the industry partners. And they might be able to link it to some people, so network again. And then I guess, can we share the, yeah?
Yeah, I'll share the, I'll share the slides if Mario can, uh, send them in there.
Yeah, perfect, um, if you provide us with a link, we'll put the slide into the description of the YouTube video, uh, on the Hyperloop summer channel as well. You can find them there afterwards. And I guess that's it, let's continue.
Then I'll go to the, to the second part, uh, trying to keep this short, uh, about logistics, yes. So do we still see the main, uh, presentation screen? Yeah, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Um, yeah, logistics, so I quickly wanna touch upon these topics, uh, first of them, first of them is transport, uh, choosing a transport company. Then, uh, quickly on the type of goods that you might wanna transport, then the documents you need and then a little bit about customs. So let's start with the transport. So what I really noticed is that you need to find a company. Uh, yeah, whether they are sponsoring or not. Either way, you need to find a company that you trust, because what I really noticed, I had a good relationship with the, with the, with the guy from the company. And I just knew, hey, if, if, if I say you, you pick up my stuff here at that time, that they will come at that time. Uh, so I think that's, that's just one of the, uh, yeah, subtle details that, that, that really need to have a good feeling. Uh, I was in contact with lots of logistics companies and just I found one that I had a good feeling with. Uh, then maybe another little tip, which I got actually from someone, from a logistics provider. But if, if you can't find a sponsorship, uh, yeah, transport is really expensive. Um, but when you don't have a sponsorship or anything, look for a transport company and not a logistics provider. Uh, cause a logistics provider, although they can, they can manage the whole process. It's often not really what you need, because sometimes you only wanna send one lorry and then you just go to a transport company, which is way cheaper. Um, and not to a, uh, major logistics provider, uh, because, yeah, you're just way too small scale for that. Uh, and also what I, which, what I suggest is that you find a company that travels a lot to your destination. So in this case, Switzerland, because they know a lot more about customs, uh, yeah, what it's like to drive in a, in the country, how to get, how to get in there the best way. Uh, if they are experienced, I noticed I had a really good company, uh, for Edinburgh and they knew, they knew everything. So, uh, yeah, that, that, that can, that, that keep a lot of thinking of, uh, of your, uh, of you. So, yeah, then quickly on the type of goods, uh, which is important for the next slide. But I'll quickly just tell you on what, uh, what, what distinctions in goods you have. You have a, uh, first of all, the normal goods and that is like, just, there could be, uh, some, some al- aluminium parts or something, uh, yeah, just, just really regular things. Then you have consumables and consumables are, uh, all products that don't return in the same shape. Back to your country as you send them there. Uh, I'll come to, I'll come, uh, to why this is important soon. Um, then you have the most difficult goods, the dangerous goods. And, uh, how do you recognize if something is a dangerous good? You just type the product and you, uh, you type in U N and if you find the U N number, you know, it is a dangerous good. And, um, with these new N numbers, some of the U N numbers are not allowed to fly in certain conditions. And, uh, some of the things that you should think about are then batteries, uh, uh, in, 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 like, in some quantities. Um, some U N numbers require special packaging. And transport of U N numbers require, uh, transport of, uh, U N numbers can take a lot longer than, uh, than regular transport. Or they can sometimes, if you don't handle this correctly, not even get to your destin- destination at all. Uh, so I think it's, those are the most, uh, important parts to, to look out for. So then I come to the documents and what I used last year to get to Edinburgh is the ATA KNA. And what this is, is basically a passport for your goods. And they've, uh, they've made this, uh, this document for, uh, basically. Companies that want to demonstrate something temporarily in a, in a, a different country. And that is exactly what we are doing as, uh, hyperloop teams. Um, so this is a really easy way and, uh, there are some other ways, but this is how I did it and I've actually had no problems with it. So that's why I just wanna quickly tell you about this and, uh, yeah, you are free to use it if you want. Um, yeah, and the ATA KNA is a agreement between eighty countries. So I think, yeah, most of the countries in the world, um, are part of this and Switzerland, uh, is also part of the ATA KNA agreement. Uh, it does cost, cost some money, but it makes sure that, that, uh, it's like a passport. So it's a, it's a piece of paper that says, okay, everything I'm showing temporarily in Switzerland, I'm also taking back out to the Netherlands. So there is no net, uh, in, uh, import or output of, uh, of, of goods. And this is really important, uh, because then you don't pay any taxes for, uh, getting into the country or any import fees. Uh, you're just completely free of that, you only pay, uh, administration costs in your own country, your own customs. And, uh, a small, really, really small percentage of the, of the, um. Of the amount that the, the goods are worth. And basically on this document, you need to put everything you are taking per transport. So, uh, yeah, I think, uh, you should, uh, look into how to fill in these documents properly. But it's good that you know about it, because, uh, there's a lot of information on it online. But with this ATA, ATA KNA, you are allowed to take mobile goods, but not consumables. Because consumables, uh, yeah, well, they are consumed in the country, so you would actually need to make import fees. And I'm not gonna tell you something that, that you might, like, I might not be, uh, be allowed to tell, but what we just did, all our consumables, we, we drove there in a different separate van. Uh, that was not via a transport company, so we knew it wouldn't be checked. Uh, and when, when they check you, you can say, yeah, but I just need this for myself, it's for own use and then it should be fine. So that's also something, it, it saves a lot of hassle at the customs. Uh, what is allowed to go on the ATA KNA is, uh, the dangerous goods, but you need an extra document for this, a declaration of dangerous goods. And basically what this is, is a document from a, a certifying company that says, okay, these dangerous goods are transported in the right way. Uh, under these and these conditions. And, uh, yeah, I put here S G S, that's, I think, one of the biggest certifying companies that does these documents. And I was really, um, satisfied with them. So maybe write that company down if you are planning to transport batteries or chemicals or, uh, because, yeah. The, you have to pay, it's not that much, I think it's like for one of those documents, sixty euros. Uh, and then you know for sure that at the customs, there won't happen anything. And what is also really good about that, it, let's say the customs make a problem about it. Then S, S G S, uh, actually tries and call the customs themselves for, for you, uh, so they try and handle that, uh, in the right way. Um, so, yeah, that's about the ATA KNA, I think it's a really good thing to look into, I had almost no problems with, uh, with it. Uh, then with customs, and this is specifically for the ATA KNA. Sorry, um, so basically what happens is the way that your transport company drives along the customs in your country, your home country. And the KNA gets a stamp, and when arriving in Switzerland, they check also the goods, give it a stamp. And then on the way back, they first need to stamp in Switzerland and in the end, you return the document to your customs in the Netherlands. And that way, everyone knows there is no net transporter of goods or anything and you pay nothing or no fines. Uh, so basically it works really easily and it's a physical document that just goes, that, that just lies with, uh, with the truck driver in the lorry. Um. So, yeah, then, um, yeah, I think that's, uh, so really important, look at, look into the ATA KNA and, uh. Yeah, then finally I still have some tips. We transported our batteries separately because it's, um. Uh, it needs a different driver as well, with specific certifications, if you wanna do it all the, all the official right way. Um, and that can make it just a little longer, so the transport can take a little longer. Then, let's say you want to fly with batteries or you want to ship them via a boat. I really recommend either buying a second pack in the country itself. Or buying a, yeah, we had a Galco, is the brand, a lithium battery box. And this makes sure that, um, because there's different ways you are allowed to transfer, uh, to transport your batteries. But this thing makes sure that because the box itself is tested already, you don't need to individually test your batteries at a really expensive organization. So maybe for a long term, uh, plan, invest in, in a good, uh, battery box. Because it just also makes the transport a lot easier and safer, because it has a automatic, uh, extinguishers in it. Um, I started making the real arrangements around two months in advance, because then you know that the date you want your stuff delivered is still available. Uh, and, yeah, they should already know about it, you shouldn't, you don't need to have your exact plans, but, uh, yeah. It's important to start, uh, slightly in advance. And then lastly, make sure there is a forklift available at the location, but I think that's something that will, uh. Uh, Swissland will arrange, or at least the E S W organization, but it's really important that when your truck arrives there, that you have a forklift available. Uh, because the truck driver is also sometimes impatient. So that's, uh, my quick, uh, tips on, uh, on logistics, I don't know if that, uh, arises any questions?
Uh, there's no questions yet in the chat.
Questions about logistics.
So, so I believe that was a very, very good explanation. Someone asked if it's, uh, the company you mentioned for dangerous goods, it's S G S, right?
Yeah, S G S, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so that's in the chat as well, there's a link in the chat for the people who asked. Okay, let's give everybody a second to maybe ask questions if they still need to be there too. Um, I just said one thing that popped into my mind, uh, again, was, um, that if, when we have been at Hanover Fair, the big fair in Hanover. Uh, each year, we've been going to the newspaper department and basically asking if they can write a, uh, something in the paper about us. And then every major newspaper, uh, in Germany had a, a whole, uh, big page about us, uh, visiting the fair, asking for sponsorships, asking for parts. Asking for with different companies, that was very, very interesting for them to write again about A I and the next big, uh. Uh, industry four point zero and so on and so forth, so that was a good thing as well. Okay, there's one question in chat, how long before this continuing round, how, how long before this continuing round of shipments allowed in E T H three premises? Okay, so that's probably before the competition starts and I guess that's probably a question to Mario.
Yes.
And I left a lawyer.
Yeah, so, uh, at the moment, I think it's a bit unknown at the moment, uh, just to give you an idea, I think last year was. Was it three weeks, two or three weeks before the competition? You know this, Oscar, actually.
Osk, Oskanov, that's probably.
Yeah, yeah, so last year we were allowed three, three weeks before the competition, but that was because we also needed, needed to do some preparation of the, of the surface. So we got an extra week, but I think two weeks we, we got, um, before that was a problem. So I, I, but it's also, uh, dependent on, uh, on the location in Switzerland.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So, uh, just to compliment Mario's answer, just leave us a mail on the info, uh, your B and R P L week mail, uh, so we can answer that later. And I had a question myself, we got in the first part on partnerships. So first of all, thank you, Oscar, for the presentation, it was very, very insightful. I was wondering, uh, when you talked about, um, setting a realistic financial goal. Um, what kind of factors or indicators do you use for, for getting this magic number? Like, for example, I imagine that engineers come and tell you, hey, I have the perfect vehicle, it just costs ten million. And, and you have to, to have some factor or something to set this number, right? So how do you guide yourself?
Um, yeah, yeah, uh, good question. Um, I think this is something, uh, I looked at together with the project manager as well. Um, is, uh, we are the seventh team and there've been like six teams before. And that's something that really was a good indicator for us for how much can things cost and how much, uh, do we expect each department to spend? And of course there are as well some factors, let's say you, uh, yeah, switch up proposition completely from last year. You can expect to spend a lit- a little more, uh, on that this year. Uh, but it was a, like, an, an interplay between, uh, the project manager and the engineers. And what was really good for us, I think, is that, uh, yeah, the, the project managers, managers had always questioned like, do we really need this? And really, really, uh, hold back in that, in that sense. Uh, but, but I think the main thing, how it was determined is that, that you don't suddenly double the budget compared to last year. So we did really look at the, the financials of, of, of previous years, I think that was a really good indicator.
Okay, yeah, great, yeah, who comes up with the numbers, is it the engineers estimating their systems, um?
Yeah, engineers and they present them to the project manager and then the project manager, I think, usually says, no, that's way too expensive, uh, yeah. And of course then it's also, uh, can we do this part in kind or, or can we? Because, uh, yeah, so, but most of the engineers always want the best parts for their department, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's really good to have a good project manager. Uh, to, uh, to keep the overview. Uh, to, uh, to keep the overview on, aren't we losing it completely?
Yeah, okay, great, yeah. Okay, as there are no open questions right now, um, thanks a lot, Oscar, for the presentation. Oh, Mario has one.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, uh, also, uh, we got this Aston email a while back. Is that, uh, once you get to the location or all the logistical arrangements, um. If you can be there to supervise it, uh, to some degree at least, try to be there. Because if there's damage to any sense, y- you are the one who knows what your system can handle in that sense, how it has to be, um. Transported. So last year, I think there were some problems with logistic companies, that the product ended up arriving damaged, uh. And we cannot do anything about that if it's a logistical company that made a problem there. So. Uh, try to be there, um, so you can supervise this project as well. That was just my inputs.
That's a good point. Okay, uh, well, thanks again, Oscar, for this, for the great presentation. Uh, we will share that with everybody involved. And I would say, let's just take five minutes for everybody to get a, get a coffee, a short tea. I think last time, that was a very, that was a very long one. Ricardo can also already start sharing a screen, and we'll start in five minutes at the top of the hour. Uh, so everybody can take a little bit of a breathe, and Ricardo can step out about starting his presentation.
Perfect. So I will share my screen and, and see you back in five minutes.
Perfect, thanks.
Well, thanks. Uh, thanks, everybody, for attending, uh, this afternoon. And, uh, well, first, I will present a little bit myself, but. As, as you may know, I am Ricardo González Barranca. I have been two years in, in Hyper UBB. I have been. Brakes engineer, uh, project manager of the subsystem of structures and mechanisms. And last year, I had the pleasure of being one of the two technical directors and, and also a team lead. So during this speech, I will base, uh, everything on my experience and, and also on the, on the Hyper UBB case. Because, uh, sorry, why? Because, uh, we are, wanna be talking about management during August, so. I think it is a topic that, uh, not too many times have been talked, and for, for, at least for my, for myself. And when I was told to do this speech, uh, Alejandro told me, okay, you need to do this about management. And I said, okay, I was thinking. Which, like, in my head, I, in my head, I had so many topics of management during the year. And I said, okay, the year it is from September to July, in this case, it will be in, in Fudik. But for me, last year, it started on August. I was, I was, uh, working on August. And I remember it was a really special month, working with my team. And, uh, we were doing just tasks of management, like it was a, a pretty busy month. So I wanted to focus the, uh, this speech on that month. And concretely, on, on four tasks that for me need to be fulfilled, so you can have a good year, okay? So first, uh, let's explain a little bit how we work in Hyper UBB. Uh, we are just committed people, committed with Hyperloop technology, committed with the team, because we don't. We don't get any kind of facility with our studies, uh, we don't take a gap year, we also are unpaid. So we just do this by passion, okay? So when a year ends. There is some people that is continuing with the, with the team, and some other people is just, is just leaving, okay? So on top of the team, on the management team, we have a group called Direction. So Direction of one year needs to find a direction for the next year. So, um, in order to search that people, it is important, obviously, the experience that they have. Uh, the knowledge that they have on, on their respective fields, but the most important thing is to find committed people. People that you know that during the year, they will not leave the boat, because problems will appear. And you will have a lot of them, I can, I can ensure you, okay? So you need a group of people. That will al- always be looking for the best for the team. So, once that you have your next direction format, they start work, they will start working during August. So the first task, the, the first task. That they need to clear out is, well, as I said, the succession, okay? You are the new direction, you are in August, you are working with your team, so you need to think about your organization chart, okay? Here, I have an example, more or less kind of what we have, uh, in Hyperloop. Uh, on the left, where you have a picture of the last year team, and on the right, you have a picture of, uh, Lucia, Danny and myself. That we were the direction of, of last year, okay? And also, it is important to say that in Hyper UBB, what we do is. Um, to combine different roles in Direction, okay? We usually have a team lead, we usually have, uh, one or maybe two technical directors, and we also have an operational director. In that case, it was Lucia, uh, technical directors were Danny and me, okay? So, you are in August, and you are thinking about your team, how you are gonna be organizing the year. So the first thing is to think about this, your organization chart. In Hyper UBB, we have on top Direction, and then on the middle, we have the subsystems. Here I have one, two, three, but. Uh, we have structures and mechanisms, we have, um. Hardware, firmware, software, we have electromagnetics, including traction and levitation, and we have. Outreach, partners, and economics, okay? So, um, you know more or less how many people is continuing next year. So based on that group of people, you need to select. Which of them are gonna be project managers of your subsystems? That's the first, that's one of the first tasks that you need to think. And in this case. We were talking that, okay, in Direction, it is important the knowledge, it is important your experience, but the most important thing is the commitment that you have with the team. In this case, um, and from my opinion, when you select a project manager. You need to think about the knowledge and how good they are on their respective fields, okay? Because they are gonna be, uh, directing a group of ten to five people, very focusing on little small tasks. So they need to know at every time what they are doing. And then on the bottom, we have the members. So more or less during the first days, you need to clear out. How you are gonna be organizing your team, and how many people is continuing from one year to the other. Next task is the objectives, okay? You have, uh, your direction group, you have more or less which people is continuing, you have an idea of what you want to do, but. You need like a rule to clear out if your year is gonna be suc- successful or not. And that's what we call the objectives. We have divided them normally into, into this way, okay? Uh, engineering and also operations. Into engineering, you have the, the innovation, that's what we all like, no? Because we are here working on Hyperloop technology, and that's like the most visible part and. The things that we all want to do, but also there is a good amount of part of free using technology that you have been developing during last year. And for the part of operations, you have full scale, okay? That's one of the biggest parts that we've been working on for the last three years, uh, because we believe. Uh, it's not only the technology, but it is also how you implement it into society. And also the economics, as Oscar has explained, if you don't have money, none of your, of your objectives can be accomplished, okay? So you need to think about your objectives, and here I have some tips for you. First, you need to be realistic about what you have achieved during last year. And for this, I say, okay, if last year you didn't levitate, you didn't have a linear motor. You didn't have a vacuum tube, a vacuum tube, don't expect, don't expect your team to be doing all of that. Into one year, because it's gonna be impossible, okay? Uh, from my experience, what I think that works the best is to make a lot of small steps. And that's the way that you put a good base onto your team to have a good future on the next generations. Then you need to divide your objectives into essential and into not essential. And why do I say this? Because maybe during the year, some of them need to be removed. Maybe not because of your choice, maybe because you don't have money, you've run out of time. Uh, it is too complex, or you don't have the, the correct people to develop that objectives. Then you need to clear out or to establish your own criteria about what is an objective, okay? Because then, uh, I will say, uh, more about this. For example, for me, having a vacuum tube is not an objective. For me, the objective is to implement the vacuum technology. For me, the objective is not to implement a daily motor or a reverse motor. For me, it's to propel our vehicle. Without touching any kind of surface, okay? But this is a criteria that you will establish with your team to say, okay, this is an objective, and this is not an objective, and we are gonna be focusing on this. And we are gonna not focusing on this. And the last tip is, uh, to count your objectives. For me, a good indicator is that if you have a lot of objectives, let's say fifteen or twenty. Uh, that's not a good in- indicator. Why? Because maybe some of them can be grouped into only one, okay? So you have to maybe rethink, uh, rethink them. Your third task during August would be the recruitment, okay? You are in August, obviously, people is in holidays, it's with their family, but you need to start prethinking. About who are you, uh, about, how you are gonna be recruiting that people to fulfill your objectives, okay? So first, you need to dimension your subsystems, okay? You have your organization chart, and you have your, your objectives. So, for example, if this year you are focusing on a new chassis, you will need a lot of people in the structures and mechanisms group. If you are developing a new motor, you will have a lot, you will need a lot of people in the traction group, okay? So you need to say, okay, here I need three people, here I need five. A new dimension of your, of your team, also based on the people that is continuing for, for, from the last year. Then you need to identify the profiles, okay? You've said, okay, here I need five people, but which type of people, you know? If you are developing, for example, a tube, you will need one profile for the vacuum technology. One profile mainly for the logistics, another profile for the CAD designs, okay? So, uh, you need to assign a role for each person. And lastly, you need to make a good training month. In Hyper UBB, uh, we dedicate the whole September to form all the new people. Some of the people is continuing from last year, so they know a lot of their fields, uh, they know how we work, they know our routines. But more or less, half of the team is completely new in the beginning of September. So don't expect that people to be contributing with, uh, for the team in the minute, at, at the first second. Because that will not happen. You need to give them a lot of resources, you need to have a lot of patience with them. Because, and I have shown here with the pictures, in the pictures, most of that people will be representing your team in the ESW. Will be making the presentations and will be working during the nights. So that's the human part of the team, like, um. Be conscious that we are here because we are students, we have a lot of, a lot of passion, and we are committed with the team. But you need to think about this. So you will have your organization chart, you will have your objectives. And you will have dimensioned your, all your subsystems and with the profiles. So the last task that you need to do, that you need to do during August is, uh, the planning. You need to divide the year into your phases, okay? Here I have shown you, uh, five of them, that maybe you could divide your year into these ones. And you need to, uh, put them in chronological, chron- chronological order, and to give them a time to be accomplished. For example, here we have the kickoff, okay? The kickoff will, will start in September, but as I have said, for some people, it is starting on August. Then you will dedicate one month to a training month. During September, October, November and December, you will be doing design phase. In Hyper UBB, we don't manufacture, uh, none of our components, so we, we have to send them to the companies. So during January and February, we have like an extended Christmas, where almost every day we are receiving all the components and all the parts. And we start manufacturing. And then in May, you can start testing with your complete pot. Okay, but here, you can only see a straight line with five tasks. It looks so easy. That's not the reality. What I recommend you is that you need to divide these tasks into a lot of small tasks, tasks. And to put them into a Excel or into a TeamGan online application, okay? With this, you will have, um, you will have, uh, an, an easy way to follow. Where you are not reaching it, where you are reaching it, uh, which tasks are more difficult than what you expected and. And you will, um, let's say, have a good following of how your year is going. And, um, that would be for myself. Um, I know during August, we all, we all want to, to relax and, and to have some rest after the year. But the reality is that during August, there is people that is working to have a good year, and. All the tasks that I've been sharing with you, obviously, for me, they need to do. They need to be done during August, but, uh, they can be redone or rethought, re- rethought during the year, okay? So just take this as an inspiration, or just as a compliment to your, uh, team. Or to your routine, because maybe it can help you. And thanks for your attention. If you have any questions, I will, I will answer them.
Oh, great, great Ricardo. Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I think my internet connection might be unstable, so if, if I'm not very audible, just, just tell me. Um, then I, I just have one last thing that I remembered from the first presentation, and then we'll jump into the questions here. Um, so everybody put your questions on the Q and A tool, and I think I also have still some. Um, I just remembered sponsorships, get rental cars for free from the rental companies, because that's a big budget of, uh. Thing that you have on there, you can easily get from them. But then just adding the questions, I think, um. Alejandro also had a few questions lined up. Mario, maybe you have some, there's none yet in the Q and A tool. So anybody who wants to just chime in and go for it.
Yes, actually, I had a couple of questions. Well, first of all, uh, thank you for the presentation. It was really nice. It, it surely answered a lot of questions for me. Uh, so my questions are a bit long, actually, so the first one would be, all right. So how do you manage or, or react as a system lead or as an individual? Uh, when someone does not meet the expectations? Uh, let it be due to low performance of that person because whatever reason. Or, or maybe the expectations were too high and were not reasonable?
That's a good question, um. Well, as we are not being paid in Hyper UBB, we, we just have passion, so. When you lose the passion, maybe, maybe you are not reaching your goals, but. I would recommend that in those cases, the first thing that you need to have with that person is, uh, emphasis, like, um. I don't know if you can help me, Alejandro, empatia, empathy?
Yeah.
Yeah, empathy, like, you, you need to have a talk with that, with that person, and to, to understand what's going in his head. Then you need, like, to try to push him, try to help him with, all, all the time with empathy, and to give him, obviously, a second opportunity. Maybe if he's not reaching it, it's because it's too complex for him, so you need to put a little of help besides him. I don't know, it's understanding the case and, and trying to get the best of that person, because if that person is, is in the team. It's because at, in the beginning or at once time, you saw something, something that convinced you, uh, in that person. So you need to re-believe in, in that person. Uh, obviously, if it is the third time, maybe, um. You need to apply other methods, or you need to have a, a more serious talk with that person. But we, we'll ca- we'll can have some kind of up and downs during the year, and, and that's totally comprehensive.
Yeah, I might also add to that, like, if you, if you don't have a team that is completely having full-time people. Um, um, we, back in the days, we had a team who didn't have full-time people in there. And I think some of them might have more turn on one semester and not the other. So they might need to understand, or everybody needs to understand that maybe they might not be able to put in the hours that, the next semester. So they can, uh, really, uh, take on that much work for that semester, or just need to sit there on all, it might also be a possibility, yeah.
Yeah, that's true. That, that one of, one of the things that we consider on our planning for the year are the. The exams periods that we have during the, during the year, because it's true, like, when you are one week away from. A big exam period, the, the people, uh, expend less hours on the team, and that's completely normal and true.
Okay, yeah. Just, I know you can. Go on.
Yeah, of course. Uh, so thank you very much. That was really, really insightful. Uh, now I was wondering, how do you apply that to the? Now I was wondering, how do you apply that to the, to kind of a team dynamic? Like, you say that in Hyperloop UBB, you have a bunch of different subsystems. So what happens if the partner subsystems is not performing? What happens if there is a financial problem and the rest of the systems are being delayed by it? How do you react to that?
Well, you need to study the case, like, you need to follow up what's been going on during the last, I don't know, weeks or, or months to first identify the problem. Like, if you don't identify the problem, everything that you try will not, will not solve anything, okay? So, um, once that you have identified the problem, you need to solve it, obviously, and, and I don't know if it has been because of your, of your own fault, because maybe it is an error of the direction group, maybe it is, well, all the times that something wrong is happening, it's not only by just one cause, okay? Maybe you can identify the problem, but you need to, to think outside the box and say, okay, which causes made this problem, because it's not going to be only one. But, uh, for example, if you have economical or financial problems, as you said, you will need to start reducing more staff of last years. You will need to start making more sponsorships with material, as Oscar said. You, like, if you have a problem, you need to identify the problem, you need to solve it, but also you need to, to propose different ideas, like to avoid the problem in some cases. A combination of both, like, never in life, something is white or dark, it's gray.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Well, thanks. Um, there's one more question in the chat that we could answer. I was just, I'll card this from Akasha. I was just wondering if you use any management tools to track up the tasks? If yes, can you name them?
Yeah, um, we use one application called Team Gun Online, okay? That's what we use to divide all of our main tasks and to follow them. So it was task of direction and of the project managers to be following those tasks. And also we have a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings, communication going from up to down, vice versa, and doing, I don't know how to say it in English, but I like to write in everything that's, that's going on, on the, on the meeting. So, so you, so then it's easier for you to, to have a follow-up and to every, and everyone has access to, to those documents, so everyone can know what is going on on the team. So the information is always there.
Okay, so the two dimensions was Team Scan, probably from Microsoft, right?
Yeah, Team Scan.
Yeah, so, so the Office Scan, probably the Office Management.
Yeah, or, or you can even use Excel.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a big thing with the Gantt, Gantt Charts, everybody use Gantt Charts, that's,
Yeah, that's it.
That's, I can remember that. I think you said for tasks, but then also for lead times for manufacturing and maybe if there's heat treatment involved in a part or something, that can add up five, five to six weeks that you might not have at the end, so you need to have a part before that, to really make sure all the parts are maybe also listed in, but to Gantt Chart, so you know when to manufacture them, when to get them, and so on top of that, right?
That's it.
And do you have a special management software? I think some people are using Trello or Jira software, that you might have a task that you can send to somebody or text somebody on?
Yeah, like, um, we used to be using Trello at some points, but the problem with Trello is that it's hard to make the, the, the follow-up, so we prefer to make more, more meetings, so everyone knows what it's doing. And when a new task or when a new phase of the year is starting, like, it will come from up to down, like from direction to the project managers and from the project managers to the members, and it will be explained deeply in, in our weekly meeting, in the subsystem meeting. Also, we use Slack as, as communication method. Like, we, we took apart WhatsApp, because we prefer to separate the personal, your personal conversations of your, like, work conversations. That's also a tip.
Yeah, I really like that one, dividing personal and work, so that's, that's a big one. Otherwise, you end up with everything in Teams, it can't, and WhatsApp, and you can't find anything anymore.
Like, if you can afford to pay the Microsoft Office pack, packets, is the best option, because you have everything, you have email outlook, chat teams, then you have Word, Excel, Team Guns, you have notes, OneNote, you have everything.
Yeah, 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 Microsoft Tweet or something like that. I think there's also Smith for, if you use CAD programs, you can also, there's Siemens and X, and you can also, also match and do some of that, so I guess it's just find what suits your game, right?
In Hyperloop UBB, we use SolidWorks, so we use the PDM. But with that, you have, like, everyone can access to, to your 3D models and only one person has the right to be modeling at the same time, so there, there is no conflict. And that's also useful, like, if you are designing your pot, please don't do it in your private PC and then put everything together, because it will not fit.
Yeah, I think technical management of that thing is, that's something that is really important there as well, that's true. Any more questions from you, Alhambro?
Yes, I had one last question to round up the last two. And I was at, I really liked kind of the topic that we do not get paid, because I think it's, that's something that gets overlooked a lot of times. So in an environment where you don't provide economical compensation, how do you motivate people to work long shifts? Maybe even more than eight hours, maybe twelve hours? And which methods are effective? And which methods are effective and ethical? So that's the question.
And ethical, yeah. Well, um, as I said, what we are doing is innovation. And that's, I, I think that's the main reason why we are all here. So for me, the method that has worked the best is to make the people remember that what they are doing is unique, exceptional, and nobody else can do it besides of that person. Like, with communication, with trust, with empathy, like, you cannot say we are going to win. You cannot ensure that, like, you, you can say it, but you can, you cannot ensure that, like, to motivate the people with the prices, I think is not the way. I prefer, like, we obviously have a goal that is winning, but I prefer to look step by step. Look what you were doing yesterday, look what you are doing today. Can you imagine what will you be doing tomorrow? So I, I think that way is, is, is the one that worked for me to, to motivate the people, and also ethically. Like, for sure you will have tough moments and, and maybe at some points you only see dark and we, we are, we are people, like, you, you have to, to understand those moments, to respect them, and and if someone cannot do the task at that moment, like, some, someone else will need to do it. And maybe that's extra motivation for someone else, like, when, in Spain, we say, when a window is closed, other is open.
Well, that's, that's a good one, I guess. Um, yeah, I think somebody in the chat and the kind of also pretty much the same question. What are the top three things you could say are important for a team, which can help them to reach their goals? Is it like a team event, team weekend or something, where you can bond together, work with them? Or is it really support during engineering, finding them, maybe mentors from other departments, from industry to help them in their engineering, what are the most important things?
Well, I, I personally rewet myself a little bit about last year, because we were not able to do a lot of things about, out, outside the office. But it also works to have dinners, to have some beers at some point, to go party. I remember that at this point during, uh, last year, we went out party. Those are tough moments that, okay, what you are doing is amazing technologically talking, but also you, you make friends inside the team. And those kind of moments will help you to make good relationships.
Yeah, that, that's so true. One, one last for me, what with regard to locations, meeting locations, places where you can meet a workshop, maybe from an manufacturing offices for team? How do you get to those? Maybe you can't find them at the university directly, are there other places you can look? I think Bizarro had a brewery, an old brewery where they have their office, so is there any, any tips you can give there?
Can you repeat the beginning of the question, please?
Is, is there any suggestion to, you can give to finding workshops where for manufacturing, where you do your own work, maybe offices, meeting locations, if you can find them at the university directly?
Like, uh, if you have the facility inside the university, is, is the best option for sure, but maybe some of your members can offer you a place to work. Uh, maybe you can work also with a relationship with a company, so, so they can borrow you a, a place also, that could be, or, or maybe machinery to manufacturing, like, uh, the best obviously is to have everything inside your office, but if not, you have to consider other, other options.
Yeah, yeah, I remember there's probably, there are also companies doing metal parts or something that have trainees that work in that trainee workshop, and they build parts for them, but are never, ever actually used on something. So if they can do something useful and then they manufacture your parts, or some of your team members might even work at that company, having done their tiny shift there or something, and they can pretty much use the facilities and machinery. I think that's, that's pretty good there as well, that's a good one. One last question I have.
Well, as an example, we've been developing a tube for the last two years, and obviously, the, the best would have been to maintain our facilities, but these two years, we had to mount it in, in a parking car in the university. So, like, you have to work with what you have.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's a space, yeah, that's right. Uh, one last thing I have, maybe that's a discussion point also for you, Alhambro and Mario and everybody else here. Succession, I think there's teams who have nearly no succession and pretty much just the paperwork from last year. And there's teams who have very good succession with a few team members joining and next thing. Maybe you can, you can give, each of you can give a little bit of their experience with that and how that could be improved.
Um, so I, I don't know if I understood the question correctly, uh, but, but I would say that for, for a goal, I mean, I think the question is that how do you find the people for the new year? Uh, so I would say that building Hyperloop is really hard. You have to find the best people, you have to find, as Ricardo said, people that won't go out of the boat. So that I would call it a meritocracy, that's a, a place where you have to choose the best. And in an environment where there is succession, I, I believe that that happens naturally, because if you believe that people are good, which I personally believe, you think that the, the people in charge are, are the best and they will choose the next best, right? Uh, so if you don't have that, that natural succession, I, I would say make sure to do it properly, like, for example, Delph does it very good. They do, I, I'm not sure, Mario maybe can add up next, so continue the answer. Uh, but I, I think they do like an extensive round of, of interviews and they do it like with four or five months of, of antelation, so by May or June, they already know who the next director is going to be, so that's really cool. Am I right, Mario?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, we start very early, so before VHLU, we normally have already half the team for the next year, and we build on that. Um, but I think from our view also, something important and what we see is that maybe it, it is important to get the best people, but maybe it's not as important to get the best people as it is to get motivated people. In Delph, this year is a completely new team. So all the people you have, for example, for the propulsion system, the levitation system, is something that they're going to see completely new, because it's not normally given out in lectures in uni or learned anywhere. So what we have seen is that, apart from, well, know, being experts in their field or knowing how to navigate a bit around, is also how motivated they are, how willing they are to get their hands dirty and, yeah, dive into twenty-five different research papers about this new concept that there is somewhere. So I think something very important is, is that some people that are motivated and that have also people skills. What, what we find very important is that, yeah, the, the connection we have within the team that, that keeps you motivated. Like Luca said, having team weekends together, going out together, those kind of things. Just a, a, as an example, last year, I did hear from some people that were tired at the end of the year, all the, all the work that they, they'd say at some point, they thought of giving up, and the reason that kept them from doing so was the people around them. How it would hurt them to see, um, that, that everyone else put their heart into it and that they could push a little bit further, yeah.
I really find really interesting how you in, in Delph, like, you completely renewed your team all the years and you are still able to be on top. And not only that, but also, for example, Oscar is in the partnership teams of, of Delph, where, where it was, but I, I think he was studying physics, so like, you combine completely different fields and, and you learn in a very little short amount of time, a new field, and you develop it. I, I, I am amazed of that part of your team.
Thank you, I, to be honest, I'm very surprised also myself of how it manages to work out each year. I'm not on the management side of the Delph Hyperloop, so I cannot, I don't know the insights into how they accomplish that every year. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, totally agree, it's like, I think there's nearly no overlap between the teams, because like, sometimes there's, there's team, there's two, two variations. Either it's like five to six people carrying over and getting a lot of knowledge and management that they're giving to them, or it's a complete renew of the whole team and nobody is staying. And everybody who has done some Hyperloop competition, some competition, uh, like, the day the competition is over, you are done, you are just out of there. I guess you have given your whole life for the last year. And I think normally it's not, uh, not the time that people take to then get into the new team, help them, help them get up and running, but just be completely like, I'm done, that's it.
Don't look for me to be the next model.
It's a good feeling at the end of the year, it doesn't matter what happens, it's like, okay, I'm, I'm free now again.
Okay, um, does anybody of you have anything to add? Any last remarks?
Uh, I, I would like to complete it, or to kind of give a conclusion to this question, which was really good. And that is that there is no right answer, you have to look at the pros and cons of, of your country, you have to look at the pros and cons of your university, because for example, Hyperloop UBB has a lot of technical heritage, a lot. There are people that stay three years there and that is a super, super pro. But on the other side, Delph has people working full-time, and that is something that not every team. And there is no critic here, there's no creating of full-time and there's no creating of people repeating. This is like, use your pros and, and develop them, and most importantly, identify what they are, because you surely have a lot of things in your economy or in your university. For example, maybe your university has a very, very powerful career of, of power electronics engineering, so you may use those to get better engineers for the power ports, that's another example.
Yeah, one more thing that came into my mind as well, as you said, Oscar is studying physics. We have had that as well, that people have studied, run certain part, but then definitely taken up sponsorship or pitching to companies and something like that. That is good and that is, that can work pretty well. But then also, if you are based on one specific study course in your university, try to reach out to other study courses and implement your project in there as well, because normally you don't get these people any other way. So try to early reach out to other, other study courses, try to get them involved as well. Okay, and I guess that's it. Uh, thank you everybody for joining for the special session. There's one more ESW special session coming up, like we have two more. I think one is focused on research papers, that would be in April. And then the next one that is quite recent, but just after New Year's, Sunday eighth of January at eighteen o'clock Central European Time. This one will be about software and safety, and it will be from Daniel Papron and Arash Mayini. This one will be about software and safety, and it will be from Daniel Papron and Arshayi, that's in also jurors of the last, I believe, European Apple Week in Enever, that will tell you all about software safety, that will tell you something about airplanes, and how software and safety and safety with multiple factors of redundancy is done there. But then also, how you could apply that in your process as well. Maybe you don't need to meet all the standards, but they will tell you how you can implement that in a nice way as well. So that's in the chat, one more session, 8th of January, 18 o'clock, software and safety. We're looking forward to seeing you all there, and for that, thanks, and goodbye.